This is the City of Wapaka, third Tuesday of the month, city council meeting.
That's good. All right, welcome everybody to our second meeting in June. Today is Tuesday, June 16, 2020, and I call this meeting to order. And let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I tell you, they have this fancy new mask on you guys, so I'm getting used to it. But this is what you get when you're a season ticket holder from the Green Bay Packers. I got it in the mail. Let's have Sandy read the open meeting statement, please.
This meeting and all other meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the media in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes, so the citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
And roll call, please, too.
Brian Smith?
Here.
Steve Hackett?
I could hear him before.
Steve Hackett? He wasn't.
Just go back, Sandy.
All right.
Go back, go.
Lori Chestnut?
Here.
Paul Hagan?
Have we seen Paul on?
I did. Alan Keeland?
Here.
Scott Porczowski?
Here.
Dave Peterson?
Here.
Paul Mayo?
Here.
Dimitri Martin?
Here.
Mary Fair?
Here.
Eric Olson?
Here.
Scott, Steve Hackett?
Is he still showing up?
Yeah, he's on, he's just, can't see him.
All right, so we have eight that have responded, is that?
Eight, correct.
We're still waiting for a response from Steve Hackett and Paul Hagan. So either one of you, when you get your voice back, just blurt out so that we know you're listening and attending. All right, we can move on then to the consent agenda. These are where we take one motion to cover all of these items. Sandy does have one additional item that she needs to tell us about.
Under letter A, monthly reports number seven, the city administrator's report for the month of June was uploaded to the city website. And we also added on addendum, adding letter C to unfinished business. And that's it.
Okay. So again, we would just take one motion unless there's a council member or staff that would like to see any of these items moved to their regular agenda, where we would discuss those and vote on those individually.
This is Alan, we'll approve.
Motion by Keeland?
Second.
Second by Peterson, that we approve the consent agenda with those two additions. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carried. Regular agenda. Sandy, you just want to make a note?
Um, yeah, we're removing letter A under announcements. It was the presentation by Joan Ballwig. She had called today, or emailed today, and said she wasn't able to attend. So that'll be taken off.
Otherwise, the agenda is as printed, except for the deletion of that one item.
Hope to approve with the change.
Second.
Motion by Olson, second by Porczowski, that we approve the regular agenda with that one deletion. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Sorry about that. Uh, motion carries. Under announcements, or are we, yeah, under announcements and non-agenda items? Sandy, where are we doing public input? Where am I? Am I missing that?
We're doing that community department head reports.
So are we doing public input?
Oh, yeah, I missed it.
Yeah, B.
I missed it, sorry.
Well, I have a script to follow, and it's not here. No, just kidding. All right, so are we doing that first? The public input? Okay, thank you. I guess I could look on my agenda on the computer, huh? If it would pop up. All right, we have public input. If anybody would like to give public input on a non-agenda item, so an item that we're not discussing during the regular agenda, just state your name and address and limit your discussion to three minutes or less. We do know that we have three individuals in library meeting room A. They are not here for non-agenda items, they're actually here for agenda items. So they'll be speaking at a later time. I can see Paul Hagan is on. Paul, how are you?
Hey, Paul, your microphone looks like it's on mute on our end. Didn't help.
Good. All right. Anybody else, anybody have anything for public input? Hopefully Paul doesn't. Anything for public input? All right, let's move on then to community department head reports. So before we do the department head reports, we'll do the community report. And we have Ann Lindon Berger will be speaking on the community section part of this for the Winchester Academy. So Ann, welcome.
Okay, can you hear me?
We can.
Good. Okay, thank you for including an update from the Wapaka area arts and culture network on your busy agenda this evening. I am Ann Berger Lindon, and I am the executive director of Winchester Academy. We appreciate the support we've received from the City of Wapaka for both Winchester Academy and the network. Winchester Academy joined the network in 2018 as it was formed, following adoption of the Wapaka cultural plan, because we saw the value in partnering with other arts and cultural organizations and the city to strengthen our vibrant community. I'm here to provide you with an overview of current Winchester and network activities. At Winchester Academy, we have enjoyed a great relationship with the city over the years. It is important to us, and we appreciate that. Our usual venue at the Wapaka Public Library is accessible, clean, and inviting. City support has also been valuable to us in the taping and rebroadcast of our programs, occasional technical support, and promotional announcements on Win TV and WILW, with particular thanks to Josh Warner. We have also received city recognition and help for our special occasions, such as our 25-year anniversary several years ago, when we received a mayoral proclamation, and were allowed to hang celebratory streetlight banners and use the bandstand at City Hall lawn for our event. We have been in a timeout since mid-March, canceling the last four programs of our winter-spring series and our entire summer series due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Similarly, other network member organizations have canceled most spring and summer activities. Some have pivoted to virtual and at-home activities, such as the Wapaka Children's Theater, Reader's Theater, the library summer reading program, and the community arts board's creative take-home arts projects. Planning for the upcoming network project, Make Music Day, slated for this Sunday, June 21st, has not been deterred by the pandemic. Opportunities for community participation have been implemented due in great part to the efforts of Marcy Reynolds and Barb Ladkey. The network is especially grateful to the City of Wapaka for providing the seed money for this international event. Winchester Academy is cautiously optimistic that we will be able to produce our planned Roots of Jazz Festival in late October of this year. This debut Winchester week-long festival was conceived to be a counterpoint to the every-other-year Bach Festival produced by the Wapaka Community Arts Board. It is designed to be a multi-generational, with events planned at the schools as well as a variety of venues in Wapaka. We appreciate the support provided by a Room Tax Grant that will enhance our promotion of the Roots of Jazz Festival. We are also looking forward to resuming our regular Monday night lecture series when public health concerns are satisfied. We hope to collaborate with the library and Wapaka County by scheduling a trauma-informed care program, and also plan to reschedule the many excellent programs that had to be canceled. Alternate venues that provide greater opportunity for social distancing are being considered. We are also mindful that a large majority of our typical audience members are defined as at risk for COVID-19 due to age and underlying conditions. We look to the city's leadership in the realm of community health and safety in light of the current pandemic. Looking ahead to 2021, we anticipate that lines of communication will remain open and mutually supportive as the city pursues significant Main Street improvements. The challenges will be many, and we expect that there will be a few bumps along the way. We hope to work through any issues that may arise in a cooperative, problem-solving manner. Winchester Academy generally produces 20 to 24 adult education programs on a wide variety of topics held on Monday evenings each year. In keeping with our mission statement, we strive to enrich the community by providing free, intellectually stimulating, informative, and engaging programs. Subject matter experts are typically drawn from Wisconsin colleges and universities, as well as local professionals and leaders. Per program attendance varies from 50 to over 140. ...of our historical average, which has been approximately 85, partly due to a special series last summer, we called the All-Star Series, as well as a Bach Puster program, the Violin Program, held at Daines Hall. It is no secret that we generally appeal to retired persons, though depending on the topic, we see all ages, including school-aged children at times, in our audience. We bring people downtown into the library on a regular basis. We believe that there is a sense of community developed among our attendees as they chat during our pre-programmed coffee and cookie time, engage during the Q&amp;A sessions, and shuffle out the door. Winchester collaborates with other community organizations when there is a mutual benefit. We need to provide this brief update on Winchester Academy and the Wapaka area arts and culture network activities and plans. We appreciate your implementation of safer practices, such as social distancing and the wearing of face masks, as a demonstration to our community of the seriousness of the COVID-19 pandemic, while at the same time recognizing the need to carry on the important business of the city. Any questions?
Yeah, thank you, Ann. Anybody have any questions of Ann or comments? Well, thank you for coming tonight, we appreciate your attendance.
You're welcome.
All right, let's move on then to department head reports. And let's start with Kathy.
Thank you. My report starts on page four of the packet. And we are down one full-time employee in our department because of Tina's retirement, but we're trying to keep up to date on all of the day-to-day stuff. We did one round of interviews, and it looks like we're going to have to go back out and advertise and come back to council with a change in the department's job description for the deputy treasurer. So that'll be in the July council meeting. Otherwise, just keeping up to date with all of the COVID and CARES grants and tracking all those expenses for reimbursement. Otherwise, I don't have anything else.
All right. Anybody have any questions of Kathy? Thanks, Kath. Let's go to the library, Peg.
Well, the COVID-19 pandemic has forced us to move all of our summer library programs online. So our goal this year is to read 5,000 books. And we're calling our program, We Read 5,000. So we're encouraging you to sign up online. We also have paper ways of participating that are available through our curbside pickup. So I checked yesterday, and we have over 85 readers, and over 500 books have already been logged. So we're well on our way to meeting that goal. Additionally, because we understand that families are looking for activities, the puzzles and games and tech toys that we normally have available at the library are now being made available for circulation. So you can call and get a puzzle or a game. We're trying to put pictures of them out there so you know what's available. And I think that could really enhance your family time at home. We're also partnering with the community arts board. We are handing out art kits. We got finished with the first set of those last week. And they were all picked up through curbside. And all you need to do is call and say, like, an art kit. Or I have two children who needs art kits. And then you get them through the curbside pickup service. And we're also partnering with the Make Music Day. So there are harmonicas and drumsticks available through curbsides. So just call us when you get to the parking lot, and we can put those in a bag and make them available to you that way. And Make Music Day is going to be celebrated this Sunday with lessons on those things that you pick up at the library. We have computer by appointment and microfilm use by appointment. And we're getting ready to embark on a new phase where we will be available for those services our regular hours. So Monday through Thursday, 9 to 8. Friday, 9 to 6, and Saturday, 9 to 2. So we're enhancing our services by allowing them to happen for more hours. We're also gearing up for browsing. And our library board will be considering policy for the pandemic that will help us to make sure that everybody is safe when they enter the library and that there are rules in place for using the library. So we're expecting our safety equipment soon. And we expect that we should be able to accommodate about 27 people in the library at one time. That is a formula that we've used through the guidelines for reopening libraries published by the Department of Public Instruction. So we're looking forward to having people back in the building. We are asking that people wear masks as they enter the building, and they'll be supplied if you need one. So if anybody has any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Peg. So far, you are all getting off easy here. And maybe you should. Justin?
Public Works Report can be seen on page 26 going on to 27. At the Treatment Plant, we have several large projects going on. One we're going to talk about later tonight. The other one, the Clarifier Rehab, which was approved just recently by council, has started. The tank, we have one tank that's been drained, and we've already started taking that apart. Another project, the lift station backup generator for Cover Bridge Lift Station is on back order. So we're feeling the effects of the pandemic. We're seeing the back order starting to pack or stack up on a lot of our equipment and maintenance items, or supplies that we need with our maintenance items. We were hoping to get that thing installed by midsummer so we could have it for the, you know, the thunderstorm season. But right now, we're hoping just to get it in before the end of the year. Streetside, of course, very busy. We installed the high school graduate banners, partnered up with the school district. Very well-received throughout the community, a very good project. I was glad to see that we were able to come to agreement and make that work for our graduates and give them some recognition. Main Street, 90% plans were submitted to the DOT. Myself, Roger, and Mark are all reviewing that plan. We're going to keep moving forward here. We had our public meeting, number four, virtually. Received a number of good comments online. And since then, I've talked to a number, I guess, a couple of downtown businesses just to continue the discussion of what to expect in the future and addressing their concerns as they come forward. Granite Street is underway. The alleyways are being hit real hard right now. We got We Energies is north of Union Street, or in the block of Union to Fulton, upgrading their gas lines. Soper Grading and Excavation, our contractor, just moved in today and started on the storm sewer down by Badger Street. And the one thing I learned today from the guy from We Energies is with their replacements and their upgrades, all the meters on that backside of Main Street have all been replaced from the '70s. The ones that they have out there now are, if their lateral gets hit, whether during construction or sometime in the future, there's an automatic shut-off valve. So it releases gas for about one to three seconds, and they automatically shut off. The meters that were out there from the '70s didn't have that. So it's a huge improvement. And I think it's worthy to note that, you know, this, we're doing this construction to make the roads smooth, you know, improve our infrastructure. And then while we're doing this in the city, these private utilities come in and make improvements at the same time. So it's a double benefit to the community. Our salt shed is nearly complete. We had to register that with the DOT, and we have a meeting next week. And we're, the, oh, another back order. We had the door opener for the overhead door is on back order. But we're expecting that in before the end of July. Truck 156, that was our medium-duty plow truck, that is on back order. We were expecting to get that by October. At this point, we just don't know. On the water side, again, our new pickup is on back order. Expecting that by August, we don't know. We're looking at some options of maybe getting a truck that's already built that meets our spec. It may not be the same color, but we're looking at those options, trying to find something, I guess, something to substitute with. One good thing about the shutdown is we did quite an extensive leak study investigation on our system. We found about a dozen leaks throughout the city, whether they be on our mains, our laterals, or the residents' laterals. And we've been hitting those pretty hard, trying to get those fixed. The facility side is just the continued revolving door of the coronavirus cleaning coordination adjustments and response. That's never-ending. But we've been trying real hard to work all the departments to make sure we are opening up and staying safe throughout the whole thing. And prior to opening up, we had all the flooring cleaned in City Hall, library, and rec center. So that's something to note, I guess, a silver lining that while people were away, we were able to get those things clean that are difficult to do. We repainted the lobby. I don't know if anybody noticed that, but it looks really nice. And our roof project here at City Hall is not on back order. That's going to be happening, should start before the end of the year. Two work anniversaries this last month. Brogan Kenzoria from our street department, two years. And Jesse Landry has 14 years at the Treatment Plant.
All right, thanks, Justin. Any questions, comments for Justin? All right, thank you. Next up, Andrew.
Thank you, Mayor. Just update on a few of the COVID-19 changes that we have going on at the rec center or in the Park and Rec Department. And if Phase 2 is approved tonight, that'll make some changes as well. So I'll touch on those real quickly. So we did end up staffing our beach a little bit earlier than expected. Had a conversation with Aaron, and there was a lot of people using our beach anyways. And we wanted to make sure we kept them safe. So we talked with the county health officer and got approval to start a little bit earlier. I did talk with Jackie, and I know Aaron did, over the weekend as well. They did have a couple saves as far as helping people who were struggling in the water. So I think it definitely was worth making sure that we got our staff down there to keep our community safe. Park bathrooms have been open and clean twice daily. We haven't had any issues. I think things have gone really smooth with that. And that may change in Phase 2 a little bit. Phase 2 also includes the rec center, some opening, and senior center, some opening as well. So we'll discuss that, I'm sure, when we get into that a little bit later. Park shelter rentals are still on hold, and we look to start those on July 1st. So we are continuing to try to open in different phases and making sure we're keeping people safe, but also giving our community opportunity to, you know, get out and be active. So next, we have our court plan survey is still out there. If you have not filled that out yet, I ask that you take a look at that. You can go to our Park and Rec website, and there's a big banner right up on top. We are updating our court plan this year. That's our comprehensive outdoor recreation plan. We've had 210 people fill that out already. That's a really good number, but of course, we want more. The more information we can get from community leaders and our community members, the better we can adjust that plan or make that plan for the community. So if you haven't filled that out, make sure you go and do that and get us your information. Program-wise, I believe since the last council meeting, I get a little mixed up on the dates. Youth soccer, youth baseball, and youth softball boards all unanimously voted not to hold their rec seasons moving forward. But we will try to continue to move forward with some plans on smaller programs that we're able to keep participants safe. Some of them that Cassandra's working on right now is Disc Golf 101. So everyone would have their own disc, and they'll learn. We actually have a Disc Golf league that's been doing some stuff out at Swan Park until they can get back at the school districts, Disc Golf. So Art in the Park, we're trying to work with some of the art teachers and possibly some from the art community to do that. And we're looking at trying to find someone to maybe have a running or cross-country club so that, you know, they can stay apart, but make sure that they're being active. And then some of the other ones we're looking at is possibly like a fishing tournament, like a virtual fishing tournament. We did our virtual run that went really well. So we're looking at possibly doing a virtual tournament. So we'll make sure we get that information out to the public. And we're still trying to work through how we can keep people safe and make sure that we're doing things in an appropriate manner. But we're definitely going to not give up on the summer and continue to work to find programs moving forward. One blessing of the slowdown for us has been able to get our capital improvement projects done much faster than normal. So the shingles did get put on at the Swan Park concession stand already. The Boyer Park irrigation has been done already. We did get to, it would've been two Fridays ago, we got the kayak launch in. If you remember from last fall, we ordered that, got that in. And I did notice a couple people using it this weekend when I came back into town from camping. It makes it very easy and very stable to get in your kayak and move out into the lake and then back onto it and get up on the dock safely. And then we did completely finish a shade structure that the Boys Youth Baseball Program donated and paid for. And we put that up out at Swan Park. Fortunately, it won't get used too much this summer, but it's a very great addition. So make sure you go out and take a look at that. And that is all I have.
Thanks, Andrew. For those of you that have, are not using the kayak because it's hard to get in and out of, it's easy to get in and out of this new kayak launch, so you can get your exercise in. It works really well. Yeah, thanks, Andrew. Any comments or questions for Andrew?
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Not necessarily for Andrew, maybe it's more for Justin. But the River Ridge Trail between Smith Street and Sunridge Court has got some washout happening in certain places from the rain of the spring. Imagine some of the other trails are. And I'm just wondering if there's any way that we could reuse the asphalt that is being taken up on Granite Street to, you know, fill in some of those areas in the parks?
We can. I believe a section of that trail does have old asphalt millings from Evan Street. So a lot of times, we recycle the materials. When there's a stockpile or surplus, we ask to take those, and we do reuse that for trails or for shouldering. So yes, that is a possibility.
Good. Mary, were you going to say something?
I was just going to comment that the parks look so good. They're just beautiful this year. So, thank you.
Great. Okay. Taking over for the chief tonight is Officer Krieger. Brent, how are you?
Hi, good, thank you. Good evening. The commissioner was advised that the 2019 annual report was completed. It's going to be distributed for them to review. And then Commissioner Schultz agreed to present that annual report. I know he's done that in the past. That'll be at an upcoming meeting, council meeting this summer. The commissioner was also advised of a speed report. We had the board out on West Fulton Street for the month of May. The average number of vehicles per day using that eastbound was 3,081. Total traffic volume for the month, 92,451 vehicles. Total traffic volume for the month, 92,451 vehicles. Maximum speed, excuse me, the minimum minimum speed, five miles an hour, maximum 56. Brings us to an average of 28.5 miles per hour for all those vehicles. Obviously, the speed limit there being 25 miles per hour. Fiftieth percentile, meaning 50% of all the vehicles were at 28.6 or below, and 85% at 32.29 miles per hour or below. So pretty good, pretty good data there. Quite a quite a busy roadway. Commissioner also reviewed the chief's report that he provided for the UCR crime reporting statistics. A question was raised regarding why the clearance and the arrest numbers differed. And it's just an explanation would be that sometimes crimes, you know, they're potentially committed a year prior, months prior, whatever be the case, and then they happen to be solved for this particular month. So it'll be reported this month. So sometimes you'll see that clearance being different than the number of arrests, and that would be the reason why. Was also advised of a recent performance report that was given to our most recently hired officer. It's Officer Jeff Mason. Officer Mason assisted on a 911 call. Citizen had fallen off of a ladder and was injured. Officer Mason assisted the spouse with getting that injured person into a vehicle and off to seek medical treatment. They described him as being very polite and courteous, helpful to the family. Commission was also advised of a thank you card. We received a thank you and some brownies, actually, given to the department by a local community, community family. Chief Ozell stated that he met personally with the family and they just wanted to express their gratitude and thought we were doing a nice job out there. So that was very thoughtful. And then lastly, the commission did go into closed session to discuss the candidates for our open patrol officer position. Motion was made, and they're going to continue that discussion at the July meeting to discuss the final candidates on that. And that's all I have for you.
All right. Thank you, Brent. Any questions or comments? All right. Thanks a lot. Sandy, you're next.
Thank you. My report begins on page 43. The Wisconsin Election Commission approved the CARES Act subgrant, which is for all Wisconsin municipalities to help cover additional 2020 election costs that were incurred due to the pandemic. I'm going to apply for the grant. The amount the city would receive is approximately $3,574.80. It'll help with, you know, it can go towards ballot cost, printing, postage, cleaning supplies, cleaning services, additional staff, and PPE. Also, when they met, they also approved a mailing that they're going to be doing, which is going to go to every Wisconsin voter that already does not have an absentee ballot request on file. With the city, I at this point, I have 597 absentee requests, which means they'll be mailing out 2,467 to the remaining city voters. This just leaves the possibility that my department could be extremely busy, and I might need more in-office help. And that's all I wanted to report on tonight. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Sandy. Any questions, comments? All right, let's go to Aaron.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Smith. As Sandy mentioned earlier, my report is uploaded to the packet. I think I missed a deadline by a bunch, 10 minutes, I believe.
Two.
Two minutes. So.
Yeah, we're keeping track of it, Justin. It's all right.
It's real close.
Yeah. So I'll touch base on a couple of things. Number one, our the grant writer position has gone through the school district. That was kind of the final leg of the approval process. That got approved. And now we are looking at, well, actually, we posted the position, the three organizations did, and we posted it open until filled with our first review of applications on July 10th. So we hope to have some good candidates. We actually have already spoken to some that we are excited are looking to imply. So look forward to having those conversations. And one update I want to say is that that has changed. When I talked to you guys last, it was going to be a contracted employee. In speaking with the labor attorney, Attorney Macy, he has suggested that that be a chamber employee. We were getting awfully close to it really not meeting the intent of that contracted employee. Nothing has changed for financial reasons for the three organizations. But just so you know, that's the only change that has happened between our talk and now. Housing, this has been a kind of a hot topic lately and in a very good way. I've told you guys numerous times about the 12 lots that sold in the cap subdivision, cap services subdivision or the Eastgate subdivision. Those 12 lots, per the restrictive covenants, have to have homes on them within 12 months. So that is awesome news. The same developer or housing builder also approached us and have, we have a signed contract and payment for the 16 lots in the Woodland Park Estate subdivision by Swan Park. So those were 16 city-owned lots. Typically, we would say that it would be 18 months to develop that because of the sheer number and the amount of lots that they're looking at doing. We did say that they could have 36 months to build out the 16 lots. If if it doesn't, it would work just like any of our other contracts have where we would give it back. And I know that we had a kind of a hiccup with that last time. We did rewrite the contract to strengthen that, and there'd be no money given back to them in that scenario. So they think that they can do it much faster than 36 months. So we're excited about that. And then in the last week and a half, we actually have sold two lots in the Buffalo Ridge subdivision, which were our only two there that we owned, for 3,500 bucks apiece. So that really leaves the city with just one lot on Ninth Street that we own. So that's a that's a big deal for our housing, and we're excited about that. And I know Justin's crews who mow the grass on all those lots all the time are excited. That'll be someone else's responsibility soon. So next on my list, I wanted to to just mention the mural that the Arts Board is working on. And you know what? I've spoken with Linda Casera, but Mary, you're pretty involved in this, aren't you? So I don't mean to put you on the spot, but do you want to talk about that a little bit?
Yes, I certainly can. So in place of Arts on the Square this year, or because we're not doing Arts on the Square, we thought we would do again a larger community art project. And we've been talking about murals. Last year, of course, we did murals at our feet, the crosswalks. So what we're doing is we are, we have now on our website, and by the way, if you haven't gone to the Wapaka area arts.org, wapakarts.org website, it's a brand new website and it's beautiful. On that website, you can click on murals and find out all about what we're doing. And also our Facebook page. But we've got a call out for artists, and that will be open until the 30th of July. I believe we've gotten two designs submitted so far. And then the process will be that a selection committee then will choose the design to be done, to be drawn. We've secured the antiques on Main Wall on Union Street, the north-facing wall, and that's where the the piece will be painted. Our theme is big, bold, and beautiful. We have a couple caveats about what can't be in the mural. We don't want any politics, religion, logos, advertisements from building, from companies, that sort of thing. But otherwise, we just want it to be an artistic expression of whatever the artist wants to express. We're hoping it will be something very uplifting. So then after we choose the design, then that person has, from now until we've chosen, I think it's August 14th, I believe, or 12th, sometime between the 1st of July and the middle of August to have that mural completed. So we're doing a lot of legwork, trying to, you know, figure out what has to be done to the wall, what has to, you know, how does it have to be prepped? What kind of paint do we need? We're doing all of that, kind of behind the scenes things now. And then we'll kind of, you know, get our feet to the ground running right after the design is chosen. So it's going to be a lot of work for a short period of time, but hopefully it'll be very well-received. I can't imagine that it won't be well-received by the community. I think it's going to be beautiful. We've had an extreme positive response from the city. They're excited about it. So that's really awesome. We also have been working with the New London, what's actually called the Wolf River Art League. If you've been over to New London, they have 32 murals, I think, completed, and their goal is, I think, 44. So it's really amazing. Some I don't like much, some I just love. You know, they're all well-done, but you just, some you like, some you don't. But they're beautiful and they're, it's just fun. It's a real community event. They actually did a, one huge wall where they sold squares. I think they were two feet by two feet, or I think, two feet by two feet, squares on a side of building, and they sold them for $5 and raised about $16,000. And that's where they got their seed money to start this project. So however, we're, the Arts Board is using money from the money that we have in our Arts on the Square fund. And then we also have some money that we receive from the CBB Board for room tax dollars. So we're putting that to good use to see this project to fruition. So.
Thank you.
Check out the website, though. It's really great.
Mary, I'm glad you give that to you because you had updates that I had not had from my last conversation. I think it's awesome. We're excited about it. We've talked about it as staff, and we just think, you know, there's a there's a new mural in the downtown area in the last year and a half.
Right.
If this happens, we talk about momentum and so many things, and who knows what it could, you know, spark for the future. And I think it's just another unique thing for the downtown area. So I think it's great.
And a little sneak preview on that whole mural concept is we don't plan on doing 44 murals in the city. However, there is a group that's looking into what are called mini murals. So it would be like you take a gas meter and you do a small mural surrounding that gas meter to make it be part of the picture. Or a manhole cover, or some pipe that's sticking out of a wall that has to stay there. So let's, why not make that into a picture? So there's a group of people looking into that.
That's cool.
Yeah, it's pretty cool. So, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Mary. Moving on in my report, the survey to employees, I want to thank Peg. I had a conversation with Peg last week, and I know Peg's done a really nice job of surveying her employees to get their thoughts and their, on the COVID policies and their comfort level in the office. And we put one out, and I'm still getting responses back. I've been keeping an eye on it the last couple of days. We sent it out on Friday, and I want to go over the results with department heads in our department head meeting on Monday. So that, we're still collecting some responses on that. Everyone knows about the Community Solidarity Event that was this past weekend on Saturday. The last week and a half worked a lot with the Police Department Chief Ozell, John Helgeson, Mayor Smith, and just making sure that that went as peaceful as it ended up going. So that was that was a positive. We are going to do a debriefing session probably sometime late next week. Chief Ozell is on vacation. We are going to talk about that, and we are likely going to do that in an emergency management committee and talk about that event. The Main Street meeting, Justin already talked about that, the public information meeting number four, I won't elaborate on that. We are starting to have a little bit of a City Hall office and structural organizational conversation amongst what I'm kind of terming the City Hall Leadership Team, which is our department heads that reside within City Hall. So we're doing that. Actually, we're having another meeting, not next Monday, but the following Monday, and that's after our normal department head teams. We've had a lot of changes here with Sandy becoming clerk, with Barb becoming deputy clerk. We're talking about a deputy treasurer now. We've had changes in the CED Department, and all that stuff happens right within City Hall. We've got a Public Works Building happening hopefully in the next few years, and we just want to take a look, and I want their input, because I'm having a lot of separate conversations. And I think if we all can get together and have have input on that overall organizational structure and the building, I think that'll be super valuable. You can expect to hear more on that in future months. Still working with the workforce housing developer that I've mentioned. We've kind of bounced around from property to property. They're still wanting to submit a, an application for the WIDA tax credit program, kind of identified a new property that could be a good possibility. So that's exciting, and we'll continue to move forward with that. If you want to find me, if you come to see all my offices moved, I've kind of gone back and forth, back and forth, I am back in what was the Economic Development Directors or Brennan Cain's office at the time. I'm back in there. We actually had a department head that didn't have an office, Sandy, and we had to get her one. And it just works out better functionality-wise anyway. So if you guys are looking for me, Josh Werner will be in my, in the office I have been in. And I think that's about it, Mayor.
Great. Thanks, Aaron. Any questions, comments? Thank you, Aaron. Mary, thank you for the update.
I would have one comment, and that would be on the gathering on Sunday. I know there was a lot of planning. A couple takeaways I had from that. Number one, obviously, you guys from the city, but our police department was awesome. They did such a good job of just being there, but not being obtrusive at all. That was wonderful. And the fact that there were so many young people there. It's kind of a hopeful thing to see young people being polite and thoughtful and having passion and speaking out about it. That was very encouraging to me, so. But kudos to the city staff and the police department. It was really good. Well done.
Thanks, Mary.
All right, let's go on to unfinished business. So we have a couple of, or we have one person for sure that would like to speak on this. But before we do this, let's just remind ourselves, this is the, this is the second first reading that we're going to have of this ordinance. So if you remember back in, I think it was March, or it could even been the second meeting in February, this was brought to the council. Council members on a majority voted to have some things changed in there. And I noticed it's in red what the changes are, but I'll have Andrew go through that. So let's have Andrew, so this is the first reading, okay, of this. So the second reading will be, if you choose, the second reading will be the first meeting in July. But as we go through this, you just, if you have questions, obviously, we could do that. And once Andrew goes through this, then I think I'll allow, her name is Nicole, who's in the other room, to speak. And then also, I think, Aaron, you have a letter from somebody too that wanted to speak on this too. And then we'll have some discussion on this. Now, of course, council members, if you have questions, as we go through the ordinance, you know, just ask those questions of Andrew as he's going through this, but give him the opportunity to explain it. Andrew, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, so as the mayor was stating, it's been a long time since we have revisited this, or we are going to revisit this. So I believe it was in February. So we did make the proposed changes that were requested of us by council. We did put those in red because it has been so long, it's easier to pick those out and remember the things that we were discussing. So in the beginning, in the definitions, it was just asked that we more clearly state, or one of the other changes we made forced us to more clearly state some of the difference of what a food stand means. So that was added to it. We do have some exemptions. There was some talk and questions, I remember, I believe from council person Mary, about some of the events and some of the rules and regulations with them. But those are still in there. Enforcement did not change. Local restrictions. So there is one change in there. It was requested that all the distances be consistent and the same. And after some lengthy discussion, if I remember, it was decided that council would like to see 100 yards for all of those instead of feet, just going with yards and making that a further distance. So you can see, excuse me, the sentence reads, "No person shall operate an outdoor food stand or mobile food unit within 100 yards of a public park in which there is present a holder of a rental agreement approved by the Park and Rec Department." So that's one spot, you'll see the 100 yards. We do have some prohibited and required acts that did not change on the next section until you get down to five. On the next section, until you get down to five B eight, and that's again where you'll see those hundred yards come in. So eight would now say sell within a hundred yards of school grounds unless part of a nonprofit or civic event on school grounds with permission from the respective school. And nine would say sell within a hundred yards of a licensed restaurant during its kitchen hours without written permission from the merchant. And then you'll see A, I think this comes from the discussion about our community events. Community events and festivals are exempt from this restriction only during event hours. So if there is, let's just use Arts on the Square as an example, that uses a large portion of Main Street during that event, if they follow all rules and regulations that are placed within this ordinance, that food truck could be in that area and be part of that event as they hold it. So licensing did not change, application and the way they go about that did not change. Licensing fee and duration, so we're looking at eight now. Let Aaron catch up there. So there are a few changes in A. There was a request at that time from the fire department to charge for those fire inspections for twenty-five dollars. And then there's some more with the changes of community events. So I'll read B again, how it goes. It looks like we have a double B there, unfortunately. So the hundred-dollar fee may be waived for one-time nonprofit community events. Such applicants may be exempt from the fire inspection only for the community events upon approval by the Wapaka Fire Department of a fire inspection report completed by any Wisconsin fire department within the calendar year of the event. So if they are from Madison, I'm just picking a community off the top of my head, they are not coming until the event on Saturday. They can send an approved fire inspection from Madison to us ahead of time so that, you know, there'd be a lot of complications if we went on a Saturday morning, they didn't pass inspection, they didn't have any record of another inspection. We are essentially working other jobs, so it's hard, could we find an inspector to come down that morning beforehand? So if we see an approved fire inspection from a Wisconsin fire department, we would approve that. All mobile food trucks are subject to random inspections at any time during the event, so we could stop down at any time and still inspect them and, and be allowed to do that. And all other application fees and rules must be followed. So that's directly talking about one-time nonprofit community events. So that was added as well. A slight change in nine, two, and that change just indicates that the Wapaka Fire Department will inspect each mobile food unit and report a pass or fail inspection to the city clerk. So like we do now for Sandy's liquor licenses, am I saying that right? Is that what we sign off for? So we're actually in that month right now where we have to inspect all those businesses, and we come in to City Hall and sign off on those. We would do the same for each mobile food unit, and, and that's a little bit different than what we were kind of planning to do the first time where there would be paper and sheets and passing them back and forth. It's just easier for us to report that like we already do for the liquor license and, and make sure we get that taken care of. Going through, down to ten, it's just renewal. Eleven is just some of the revocation or suspension and penalties that could be part of it, and that is it. So those are most of the changes, the rest stayed the same. And I guess we can open it up for questions or let our others speak.
If you want to go ahead and speak to the city council? Can't hear you yet, so, did you unmute it?
Can you hear me? No.
Yep, now we're good. Go ahead.
Okay. Hello, my name is Nicole Zomer, and I am one of the owners of the Grilligan's Food Truck in Wapaka. I am a resident of the city of Wapaka, and we started this business over the process of last summer and into the fall of 2019. Regarding the newly proposed food truck regulations, I have a few concerns with them and one in particular that will severely affect my business if it is passed. I think there's room for changes in ways that we can come to an agreement, seeing as we are one of the main food trucks in Wapaka that these regulations will affect. We worked hard last year to even find a location to park at, given the current rules of only being allowed to park in the parking lots of local businesses. We called essentially every business that had a big enough parking lot to park in, and only three businesses agreed. The two places we parked at last year were Waypoint Financial and HH Hinder. We were successful parking at these businesses, and there were no problems that arose. This summer, we have also started parking at Hanson's Furniture. However, if the new rules of a hundred yards away from restaurants applies to food truck parking, we will no longer be able to park at any of these businesses. The hundred-yard rule limits us a lot. A hundred yards is the size of a football field, which is somewhat extreme of a distance when there is limited space available in Wapaka already. It would prevent us from parking anywhere downtown or in busy areas of Wapaka. We cannot grow as a business if we can't park in a busy area and have to cancel all previous places that we had success at. This rule would be hard to enforce as well. Are we supposed to get out and measure the distance from businesses every time we park somewhere? Businesses in town have reached out to request that we park there as well. The new rule would force us to have to turn down all of these people when we could be helping out their businesses. Are you going to say no to HH Hinder when they asked us and other food trucks, such as Aftershock Smokers, to work with their business? Are you going to deny Chain Link when they asked us to park there to benefit both of our businesses? Are you going to refuse Fox Brothers Construction from using our food services to provide lunch for their employees? I would argue that having a food truck is similar to having any other restaurant startup in town. We are going to have natural competition with other restaurants. If anything, we're less of a threat to sit-down restaurants because we serve fast food that is almost always taken to go and is therefore in a whole other market than most restaurants downtown. We propose to keep the current rules of parking in private lots given permission by the business with no limitations on distance. This has worked well in the past, as far as we know, so why change the rule in regards to which areas we park in when there have been no problems? Even though regulations are being created, we don't have to bring about such drastic rules that are hard to enforce and only negatively, negatively impact food trucks rather than encouraging them. I would also like to point out that a member of the city board who argued for pushing the distance to a hundred yards when this was first proposed owns a restaurant of their own and accordingly has bias because of a conflict of interest in this issue. There are also issues regarding that brick-and-mortar restaurants pay property taxes and food trucks do not. Food trucks are required to have a service base, which is treated similarly to a headquarters. It is a commercial taxable property where the truck needs to be parked when not in use that has to be located within a reasonable distance of where we're serving. Since we're serving in Wapaka, our service base is located in Wapaka as well, therefore we are paying property tax too. Lastly, I would like to point out the goals behind creating a food truck ordinance. It is to establish regulations for food trucks because food trucks are becoming more and more prevalent to the area and in general. Food trucks are bringing something new and adding value to Wapaka. Wapaka has lost value with how many businesses have failed, with Shopko and Kmart as examples. I would think it would be in the city's best interest to encourage new businesses, especially something like our food truck, which we have only heard positive comments about. Local residents are grateful for any food trucks present in town. If the ordinance remains the same in regards to the hundred-yards rule, it would be pushing food trucks, including ourselves, out of Wapaka. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. Aaron, you have one that you wanted to read also.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I did receive an email from a Karen Hayes, sent an email yesterday, June fifteenth. She resides at E. two-six-nine-one Larson Road, Wapaka, Wisconsin. She did leave her number, I will not repeat that, but staff does have it to contact her. She says, "Dear City Council, I am writing in regards to the food truck rules you want to impose. I disagree with the newly proposed regulations because I think they are too rigid, given the business at hand. Food trucks are seasonal, they have, they have to have a base of operations, so they do pay property taxes just like a restaurant. They are subject to the same high standards of cleanliness and codes as a restaurant. There are no restrictions on restaurants being open next door to each other, so there should not be this strict of a distances between food trucks and restaurants. Food trucks also offer a different kind of food than most restaurants, so they aren't a competitive threat. What they are is an attraction in the younger generation. Food truck rallies wouldn't be so popular if the current younger ages didn't support them. They're fun, and they show the younger people that your town is current with the changing trends and will attract them to visit your town. Wapaka really needs an influx of new ideas and businesses with the loss of Kmart and Shopko, as well as ever-changing small businesses on Main Street due to the reoccurring failures. In fact, they should be encouraged to park at city parks and popular boat landings as a service and convenience to locals and tourists alike who seasonally use these places. I feel like the city is trying to discourage this type of new business venture instead of promoting it." That's the end of that statement. And Mayor, if I could also just kind of give one, just summary of a conversation I had as well with someone today? It was, let's see here, the gentleman's name, oh, come on. De'Aaron Chancellor, I believe the last name is, right, is the owner of Aftershock Smokers. We had a long conversation, and he, he kind of reiterated some of the things you've already heard. Kind of when we talked and we went through some things, I did explain a number of the reasons that we have this in, in order. And one of the main reasons is that we want to basically be able to ensure that the permits and safety standards and all of that are being met if they're operating a business within Wapaka. And also, the tax thing has come up as an issue, and I kind of view those two as kind of the main pillars here. I did explain, actually, on page one, I believe it is of the ordinance, and I'd have to pull it up here again, but there is an option, and we talked about this this afternoon, to where there can be permission sought after. And if you gain written permission of a business, that's okay with you being there, it'll actually allows you to be within that hundred yards. So there's an option to be within that hundred yards. It's not like it's a hard straight line. So I think that's important to note here as well. And actually, when I did share that with this gentleman, he was, he actually said, "Okay, well, I really forget all my other concerns." That, I think that kind of takes care of my main concern. So that's the only other thing I wanted to, to share, so.
I, I just want to clear up something, too. When we talk about this ordinance, when, when the ordinance originally came to us in February, there was a distance on it, and, I mean, the only thing that changed was what's in red. So there was a distance in there, and council, again, at a majority at that time, said we'd like to see a hundred yards in there, and we'd like to see it uniform throughout the whole process. So this ordinance has not changed in stating that you have to be a certain distance away. So the argument would be that, I mean, the ordinance was always in there that said how many yards away. So if you were arguing a hundred yards is too little, I can understand that, but to have no distance on it would be completely different than what the first ordinance that was proposed. And I think you also have to look at, I know, Andrew, you want to talk, but I think you also have to look at under four, where they talk about food stands in the park or near the park. You know, we're, we're protecting our parks, and I think that was brought up at the last meeting, too. And I think that's where the discussion said, "Well, if we're going to protect our parks from having people in there, then we should also be protecting our other businesses from that." And also remember, understand this, that we do not have an ordinance in place right now. So right now, if somebody wanted to have a food truck in the city of Wapaka, there is nothing that stops them from being here. So there, the, having an ordinance, we need something in place to make sure that they're inspected and, and, so, we need to get to that next step, I guess, is what, what my point is. Andrew, what did you want to say?
I was just trying to think back. I know it's been a while, and a lot has happened, but I believe it, I, I believe the business one was a hundred feet in the first, is that what I was saying?
It was a hundred and fifty feet, Andrew. It was a hundred and fifty feet, and for the park two, it's five hundred feet.
Okay.
So we wanted...
So there was some differences, and you guys wanted them to be the same, and that same, you know, for those that voted for it, were, was a hundred yards, so.
No, a hundred and fifty feet.
That was the first one. Now it's being proposed a hundred yards.
But we went from feet to yards.
Yes.
That's three times.
Because, because one of them, one of them was three hundred feet, which is about a hundred yards. So I think we moved them all to a hundred yards, if I remember correctly.
Well, the proposal is a hundred yards. Go ahead.
I'm, I'm sorry, the first go-around, for the park two, is five hundred feet.
Yep.
Okay. For restaurants, it was a hundred and fifty feet.
Maybe the school was like three hundred feet, and I think we...
I don't know about the school.
Paul's correct. Paul's correct, yeah. But we did not talk yards at all, so.
We did talk yards.
Yeah, that was what was requested.
Andrew said he had a hard time dividing by three.
I struggled with that.
So we decided to go with yards instead of feet.
Have we compared our restrictions with these yards and feet to any of the other municipalities in, like, the valley that we have food trucks, to see what they do? I mean...
So part of what, part of writing this, and unfortunately, I don't remember all the ones we looked at, but I know La Crosse was part of it, Green Bay, and some others in the Fox Valley. You know, I can't say with certainty what their numbers are anymore. I do know La Crosse started higher and eventually worked their way down to lower, based on just looking at theirs. And many, you know, honestly, many are less than a hundred yards, but I can't tell you exactly what they are.
I guess with the proliferation...
It's been quite a while.
My, my thinking, and I can see these people's point, is we have, quote-unquote, "A lot of eateries in this downtown area." Some of them are, so she would bar some of them are actual restaurants, and I guess I see her point that effectively I'm eliminating, just looking in my mind's eye, eliminating them from being downtown because a football field is, you know, you could be from the Paka Pub, a football field is, you know, the end of North Main, and then you've got the Paka Ratchet, you go this way, there's a big circle. So I guess I see their point. And their restaurants and eateries closer than that to each other. I guess, I don't know, I know we've, but now I've gotten more information. I, I can see there's some valid validity to this question.
Well, certainly, the distance between Simpsons and, what's the, the...
Salt and Belly.
Salt and Belly.
Salt and Belly is not a football field. You know, there's two restaurants, right? They're competing with each other, but are they really? Because they serve totally different things, and they have different clientele, and they're open at different hours. So I really appreciate what the young woman said about being an attraction for young people. We want to encourage young people and young families to come to this community. It's happening all over. Food trucks are a thing. Everybody likes food trucks, and they're, they're everywhere you go. So I think maybe we're looking a little old-fashioned-ly, if that's a word, at this. I, I just...
So, Mary, what is your proposal? I, I mean...
Well, I, I want to get rid of the yards.
Are you, are you saying zero yards? Is that what you're saying?
Um, well, that's, that's exactly what I would say, is zero yards.
Is that what you're saying, is zero yards?
But I could certainly say maybe thirty yards, that's... That's 90 feet or 50 yards. That's more reasonable, but our downtown is only two football fields long.
I guess, what's the reasoning behind it, then? Just, Aaron, give me the definition of why we put this in here.
The distance?
For established restaurants to maintain or not lose business? But, you know, it's, it's a fine line we're walking here, I guess. I don't know.
You asked him a question. Let him answer, please.
So I do think that it was, and I wasn't directly involved with the, the group, but I, I was definitely having conversations on the outside. And I think the main reason was is that these are businesses on wheels that can kind of pull up wherever. The taxes associated with a building on our Main Street is significantly more than what a fee would be for a food truck ordinance. And we feel like, from an equity standpoint, that a distance of what, you know, Salt and Belly and Simpsons are absolutely right next to each other. Actually, I just came up this afternoon. But they're both got brick and mortar, and they're paying taxes, and, and there's some equity there. You know, I think, and, and like I said, when I had that conversation with the, with the gentleman this afternoon that owns one, and we've heard it a couple times here, that H.H. Heinder has asked, and they've gotten permission, and so on and so forth, "Well, they could still do that." You know, they, they could still go in, have permission from a business like that and written, and then that supersedes the 100 yards because they've had permission from those businesses to do that. So there's, I think that's important to reiterate, and I don't mean to repeat myself, but, you know, it's not like they, there isn't an opportunity for that. It's, it's to protect our tax-paying businesses. And, and I have heard, and I just want to say this, too. I have heard a couple times, you know, that we're trying to discourage something that maybe is attractive to younger families, and we're trying to drive food trucks out. And that's not at all what we're trying to do. Actually, we have a department head that organizes events specifically for food trucks to come into South Park three or four times a year. And we're just trying to create something that, that provides us with some means to, to have some accountability, kind of address that equity issue, but also give it the flexibility to where, you know, if they have the permission from those places, that they could still go there. So, sorry for being long-winded, but-
That's fine.
Can I, can I speak on that briefly? So the original numbers came from, you know, we did want to respect the, the businesses that we have downtown. We don't want a food truck to be able to park right in front of their business and pull people who are potentially going into their business away. You know, that number essentially kind of came from, you know, where the food trucks had already been, and looking at maybe what those distances were, and knowing that we did not have any issues with them being there. I did not receive any phone calls. I don't believe anybody else received any phone calls with those spots before we started thinking about this ordinance, that we decided that, that would be a good starting point for us, as far as a distance, to try to, you know, move something forward while still protecting our business owners who, you know, do pay taxes downtown, so not allowing them to park right in front of their business or right next to their business.
Mayor?
Let, let, beg talk here.
La Crosse is 150 feet.
Okay.
If you're looking for another.
Laurie, go ahead.
I just wondered, were, were the restaurants downtown talked to about this? To see if it was an issue or just one restaurant, or? Did anybody come forward? Did you reach out to anybody else to say, "Hey, the food trucks, you know, were doing this ordinance"?
No, we did not.
Eric, go ahead.
So it sounds like they'd be okay, she'd be okay with H.H. Heinder because there's really no restaurants anywhere other than that, right, that are nearby? But what about-
Rose Garden.
Oh, Rose Garden, so that's within that distance. So that, she'd have to get permission from them as well, right?
Yeah, that, is that how it's been talked about, Andrew? I think it is. Anyone within that 100 feet, correct?
100 yards.
100 yards, sorry. 100 yards.
Where are you looking on that one?
Because I'm thinking about Waypoint. There's probably, how many restaurants within 300 feet or 100 yards, right? That's probably five, six, seven restaurants that they would need permission. That's a lot. So I'm in favor of a lesser distance, because I think, like she said, we're just kind of, we're just shoving them out with this number, right? I mean, if you, if we, if we vote in 100 yards, you're shoving them out of the downtown, period. And I don't want to do that. So I think we should come up with a fair distance.
Mayor?
Paul, go ahead.
Okay, I, I'd like to point out that the woman that spoke is speaking about me. I own Dairy Queen in town, and I did speak up about the, I concern of the distances. She's parked at Waypoint, Waypoint, and I haven't measured it, but I would guess that it's way over 100 yards from Dairy Queen. So I'm not speaking for me. I'm speaking for Little Caesar's Pizza, Simpsons, Salt and Belly, the coffee shop. I don't know if they serve food and, and other businesses. Food trucks are unique in that they can pull into the spot anytime, cherry-pick the hours, you know, from 11 to 1:00 or 11 to 2:00, cherry-pick the busy hours, and they motor on and go home. I don't know where the discussion of them paying property tax came into, came into the equation here, but I'm not sure if they pay Waypoint or Heinder any fee to compensate them for their property taxes. I, my guess is no. So they park there for free. They have their $100 fee that pays, under this agreement, that they pay the city, and that's it. At DQ, I pay $12,000, $13,000 in property tax a year. Okay? That's a burden. Simpsons pays an amount of property tax. I'm sure Little Caesar's does, Salt and Belly, and other restaurants downtown. It's a different playing field. And to have a, a food truck pull in at times of their choosing to compete with these other restaurants that are brick and mortar, that have way more expenses, I, I think is unfair without their permission. So they can ask permission of all of these restaurants. I'm not sure where 100 yards is in relation to everybody downtown, but they can ask permission. If they have permission, then under this ordinance, everything's good to go. If they don't, then it wouldn't be. But it, a food truck and a brick and mortar restaurants are two different entities, and they're offered under different restrictions and different expenses. And that, that's why an ordinance of this type, I think, is needed. And again, I'm actually speaking for myself, because I think my restaurant is significant, way more than 100 yards away from where they want to park at Waypoint. So I'm not looking out after my interest at all.
So let me, let me make sure that we understand this for everybody that has read this and probably reread this. So if, if you have a special event, they're exempt from asking for, for, for the business to give them permission. So, for example, Arts on the Square. Food trucks come to town, they park on the square. Even though they're within 100 yards, they're allowed to be there, okay? There's a, so that's one example where they would be able to, to be there without having to worry about the distance. I, I guess that was my point. I thought I had another one. I'm sorry.
Well, they can be there anytime with permission from the owner of the restaurant that they're close to. So that's in the ordinance.
They don't need permission-
During the festivals.
During a special event.
Exactly, right.
That was my point.
Right, and the, the ordinance also allows them to park close to a, a existing restaurant with permission. So they have those two things going for them. The only, you know, so I, I feel that we need to lower the number of feet or yards, and then I think it's, it can get wrapped up in.
I'd like to just add something onto that. In my mind, it makes sense to have some sort of a distance if we're allowing them to park on public property. But if they're parking on private property, I don't see how it's our place to tell them that they can't park there. If there's an employer who wants to have a food truck come during the lunch hour for his or her employees, and that employer happens to be located close to a restaurant, if that truck is coming on private property, I don't think that we should be restricting it.
But they'd be covered because they have permission to be there?
From the property owner. They shouldn't need to get permission from the nearby restaurants.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Right. Okay.
I mean, isn't that the property owner's right to have a food truck come onto their property? I don't know that we could restrict that, right? Or we would want to.
Well, I think you can, but, I mean, that's a whole nother discussion, really. I mean, I, I think, you know, if your business, if you're, if you're in the accounting business, you're not in the food truck business. And you can't use that property for two different things. I don't, I don't believe you can without permission or without permit. But I don't know that for a fact, but I'm, I'm just trying to be the devil's advocate to what you said. And you might be accurate, but I'm just saying there, there could be something out there.
Right, yeah.
Yeah. Andrew?
Just for a reference, I did look up Green Bay, which is another one that we used. Their distances, and it read, it reads as, "Within 100 feet of a public entrance of any business which is licensed or permitted restaurant by the county health department. During the hours, the particular business is open for sale unless written permission is granted by the business." So they are also 150 feet.
No, no, you, you're saying feet.
Yeah.
But we're 100 yards, which is triple that distance, right?
Yeah, I'm just stating, I'm just for reference. You guys asked if we had looked at what other ones we looked at.
That's why I'm in favor of a lesser distance, because you're saying 100 feet in Green, was it Green Bay?
150 feet.
150 feet?
In Green Bay.
Then we're, we're double that.
And those are really big cities.
Okay, so. All right. This is the first reading, but let me tell you a couple things here. Number one, I feel sorry for our staff here, because we're almost back with some of your discussion on the discussion we had at the last meeting. It'd be interesting to see what the vote was at the last meeting, because I, the majority must have said that we wanted it 100 yards, but I don't-
No.
I think it was feet.
Well, so you're, you're thinking that Andrew misunderstood you, and-
No, it was, they asked for 300 feet, and then I couldn't do the math to yards, and it was 100 yards. So I remember that.
Okay, so, all right. So we have 100 yards in here, okay? I'm hearing, I guess I'm not hearing from everybody, so I shouldn't make this assumption. But wherever you see 100 yards in here, are you talking about changing that number? And if you are, what number are you talking about changing it to? Or are you saying you want this completely out of there, and this goes against any food truck ordinance that you've seen in other communities? All communities have this in here. We're just talking a different distance. So I'm, am I assuming, then, that you want to keep something in there, but you want it to be lesser?
Right.
The ones that are against it?
Right.
Okay? Dave, what?
I'm okay with either number, I believe. 100 yards or what amounts to be 50 yards with the permission factor thrown in. I think we should keep it standard. That was another reason to go to 100 yards, was standard from schools, from, everything was going to be the same. Parks, schools, businesses, everything. I think we should still keep it a standard number at whatever.
I do just, I do think that some of that conversation, we were 500 and 150, and then we were kind of all over the place, and then we brought the 300 to kind of meet in the middle, and I think that was a consensus, and then keep it standard. So that's, I think, how we kind of got here today, so.
Well, so, let me go back to this again. You want to see some distance in the ordinance. Is that, is that a fair statement? But you're not in favor of the 100 yards. So if you're not, let me, well, I'm asking the people that are not in favor, okay? So if you're not in favor of the 100 yards, are you also not in favor of having any yardage at all or any feet at all? I mean, I didn't, the only person that I actually kind of heard that from was probably Mary and maybe Dimitri. And I don't, I don't know that I am saying that accurately.
I'm fine with some, I understand the point about being equitable for businesses that are brick and mortar, and I get that. So I'm fine with some distance.
Okay. Mary?
I'm not fine with the yards. I'm, would be fine, I could go with 100 or 150 feet.
So you're okay with, you're okay with-
I'm okay with an amount.
You're okay with having something in there?
Right.
Whatever we decide.
And the permission of the restaurant owner, the brick and mortar restaurant owner, that is already in the ordinance, so that's there.
Good.
This is Alan. I'm in favor of the ordinance as written, but I would change the distance, and I would drop it down to 50 feet.
Good.
Speak up. I'm in agreement of dropping it down. I mean, 50?
I'm in favor of everything, too. I just think a football field is a long way, so maybe cut that in half.
Well, you know, I need to correct that. No, a football field is actually 120 yards. I just want to correct everybody. It's not 100 yards?
100 yards. But I want it less than 100.
Paul, do you want to say something else?
Well, I'm responding to the 50 feet. A food truck could ride right across the street from any existing restaurant. If 50 feet, 50 feet's nothing.
A food truck is probably 50 feet long of itself. Not quite.
Are they allowed to park anywhere on our streets, like in, in the angle parking or-
They have to follow, they have to follow all regulations, parking and, you know, they can't park in a two-hour parking for five hours, and they, so they do, it is in there that they have to follow all.
They have to look around a little for a specific spot for them.
I can try to find that exactly for you, how it's stated.
Along with that, can they park in the parking stalls and take up five parking stalls?
I think they're too big.
Not if they don't fit.
Yeah, I think they're too big.
Too long, yeah, so they'd have to park somewhere on a parking lot, wouldn't they?
They parallel park in the angle stalls, is what I'm saying. Choose up four or five stalls.
I'm getting so much more information. Now I'm just thinking about all this stuff, and it's, yeah. They can't park across-
Here, here's our dilemma, all right? So.
I found it.
We're into the middle of summer. We have food trucks that are, that are already in our community, and they obviously want to be in compliance, and we don't have anything for them to be in compliance with. So right now, we have nothing, okay? So if we choose to change the, the, the distance here, which, you know, that's up to council to decide to do that, and Tom Hart, this is for you, if I can hear you, because we asked this the last time. So if we choose to change the yardage, if that's what the majority wants, does that mean we need to come back with a first reading again?
I think so. This is, I mean, this is quite a contentious discussion. I think it should, I think it should come back again for a first reading.
Okay, thank you. That's what I thought you were going to say, but I wanted to make sure that you're going to do that. And I guess I would suggest, too, and Sandy and Andrew and Aaron, all three of them asked me this, and I, I said no, because I thought we were under an agreement. We probably should hold a public hearing then, too. Normally, when you have an ordinance that you put in place, you have a public hearing, and we did have one, but it was way back in February. Okay? So we've forgotten about if anybody even came. I'm not even sure anybody came. So if we, if we decide to come back with a first reading, then we need to, I, I would suggest that we have a public hearing. Are you?
Well, I just want to follow up on Mr. Pachaski's question. It states, "Where mobile units are being operated in any street, all traffic and parking regulations shall be observed, and no unit shall impede the free use of such street."
They would have a hard time anyways, because they'd need to have a place to put their garbage can and everything else that's required. Eric, go ahead.
I guess the number that I keep coming back to is 150 feet. So I don't know if anybody else would agree with that, but I think I heard that over here. So that's the number I'd like to see, 150 feet.
Okay, and you want to do that uniformly throughout the whole thing?
It certainly would make it easier. I don't know if that's going to be an issue with parks or anything else, but I, I have no issue with 150 feet across the board.
Or, go ahead.
And then, Mayor, did you say that then, because there wouldn't be an ordinance for a period of time that they could do as they pleased?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Well, they still have to follow the other?
Right, right.
Ordinances in our city.
Just so I'm clear on the parks one, that, that only applies if there's a rental agreement in place on that day that they want to park in there.
Exactly.
So they'd be competing against someone that?
Exactly.
Okay. Otherwise, they can go into the parks if there's no agreement. Correct?
They can go in the parks if there's no rental agreement with permission from the parking director. They, we, they are expected to let us know, or ask, or set up something so that we know, you know, who's in our parks, when, and the food truck rally would be a little bit different than that.
Is that in the ordinance, what you just said, that they need your permission?
Yes.
It is, yeah.
We should work on that wording a little bit, but it does say that.
Says, "No person shall operate an outdoor food stand or mobile unit on property within a public park of the city unless authorized to do so by the parking director." And then it talks about, "No person shall operate an outdoor food stand or unit within," right now it says 100 yards of any public park in which there is a rental agreement.
I think that's where the discussion came, is because we were, the paragraph there is protecting the people that are in the park, which is food trucks. You're protecting food trucks so that other food trucks don't come there, but you don't want to protect the brick and mortar within the rest of the community. So, but, again, I, I'm digressing, because everybody, I think, has now agreed to have something in there with a distance. So we just need to come up with 150 feet. And I, I know Paul Mayo has said that you're okay with the ordinance as written?
Yeah, I, I'd like to bring up something else, too, in regard to signage. This particular food truck, when they've been located at Waypoint, I've noticed a sign out on Banter Street, across the street from the post office. That, I, if another, any kind of business wants to do that, they can do it. And I don't think they should be able to do that either. If they want to have a sign in front of Waypoint, I don't know, maybe that's permissible, but having a sign that far off their location, when nobody else, no other business can do that, I don't think that's fair either.
Well, again, this is a food truck ordinance there, you know, I mean, everybody has to follow the rules that are set up, and you're right, you cannot have a sign on another property that you don't own, or that's not contiguous to your property that you're running your business on.
Right, I get it.
So I would say they're in violation.
That, that would, okay.
So they should be reported.
Okay, I just wrote it down.
Okay.
For that. I don't think we need to put a sign, my point was, I don't think we need to put a sign ordinance part into this, do we?
I would suggest that you not do that.
Okay, thanks, Tom. So, Dave, we're, again, are we just down to the, the distance? Everything else in the ordinance you're okay with? I mean, this is the first time, and it's okay, but this is the first time, and for, as long as I can remember, that we've had to bring a ordinance back, a first reading back three times. But something new, you know, it's okay. Dave?
Two things I was going to mention about Little League having a tournament out at Swan Park. They can't have a food truck in there either unless Little League would accept it, right?
Yeah, so they'd have to, Little League would have to want them in there, and that, that's actually one of the main points of the outside of the parks, is where we sell concessions, or where someone generally is trying to run a fundraiser in a park or something like that. You know, that's really where we saw the major issue, because that's, that's the biggest fundraiser for baseball, is concessions. And, so that's why we wanted to make sure that they couldn't, you know, encroach on that. Unless the baseball wanted them to be in there for some reason, then, then that would be okay.
Okay, well, that's, I would say 50 yards, 150 feet. Good. Paul, you want to go back to?
I was just going to say, originally, Andrew suggested 500 feet for parks. There's a reason for that, because they wanted to protect exactly what he was talking about. But as far as restaurants, who also have a similar mission, raising money for their businesses, are, are, are now 150 feet. You know, it's, but, if we're in consensus of 50 yards for everything, I'm okay with that.
Dimitri?
I guess I was just thinking on that rental agreement, the language in there, could it, could it specify a rental agreement with concessions? Because if they're not having concessions, then what's the point of restricting a food truck from coming in? Just because they rented a part of the property?
Yeah, I guess that, I mean, to me, when you start splicing everything up like that, it makes it a little bit harder to enforce, but, you know, say, someone is having a wedding at South Park, which does happen, and a food truck comes in, you know, unannounced or encroaches on that, I mean, I could see how that would cause some issues, too. I think for knowing what the rules are.
Isn't that what it says? It says, "Operating a food stand or mobile food concession." That's exact, isn't that, am I missing what you're asking? Because it says right within that, right above number five there, exactly what I just said. I'm sorry for interrupting you, but, but it says, "A rental agreement approved by the Park and Recreation Department, or where the city operates a food stand or a mobile food concession." So that's exactly what you're asking.
No, I'm, I'm saying a rental agreement for part of the park by a, a third party. If they're not having concessions, then why should that prevent a food truck from coming in?
Well, and I don't, does it? I don't think it does.
Well, any, yeah, because any rental agreement approved, so any rental agreement that we have would be part of that, or where the city operates a food stand or concession stand, so. You know, I think the distance was pretty high to begin with, as Paul said, and, you know, I don't think it affects the rental agreements if that's lower, like the rest of them, if you guys so choose to go that direction.
So you're saying if, if there's a family reunion at, at Brainerd Bridge, then that would restrict somebody from having a food truck at Brainerd Bridge?
As I read it, yes.
And that's your comment? Okay, sorry.
Because there's other people who use Brainerd Bridge, presumably, that.
Don't they still need your permission, though?
Yes.
Okay, so what do you think, well, let's, let's stay with the yardage, and we'll go back to Dimitri's thing. Okay, Eric, what did you?
Well, one thing I, I'm thinking about with Dimitri's point, if you guys ever heard him, a lot of them have those generators, and they're pretty loud. I don't think I'd want to be having a family reunion, and then all of a sudden, food truck comes roaring up there and running their generator. I, I think we should keep them out. If there's a rental agreement and somebody's paying for a shelter, a food truck shouldn't be in there.
Or maybe they could get permission from the party that's renting.
Well, that's, but then they'd still need his permission, too.
All right, here we go. We're going to do 150 feet, or 50 yards, whatever you want to write in there, Andrew, and put it all the way through there, okay? And it sounds like we're okay with leaving that paragraph that Dimitri was talking about in there, as, as written, which means that they would not be allowed in there if there is a rental of the, of the space within the park. Anything else about this ordinance that you want to talk about? Nicole, since you've been sitting there so long quietly and stuff like that, you want to add anything at all to what our discussion has been?
I, I think that we're fine with the 150 feet as well. I just, the biggest point was that 100 yards just seemed a little extreme, so 150 feet, I think, is more reasonable.
Okay. All right, so, we will bring it back to the, what is it, the July 7th city council meeting, and that'll be the first reading, and we'll have a public hearing before that. Anybody, any objections to what I just said? We're all okay with that? Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Nicole, for attending.
Thank you.
All right. Somebody want to order a pizza? Okay. You got anything on your truck?
Paul have something in the back of his truck?
Yeah.
Some dilly bars?
Ice cream, yeah, dilly bars.
Okay, let's go on. Now, this was, this is talking about phase two of the plan to reopen the facilities, and, Aaron, that's you.
All right, thank you, Mayor Smith. So, not much has changed from the phase two of what we communicated last time. As you guys know, the county health order has changed, and the county health order did change after we were able to submit all the documents to the packet. So the one that's in your packet is a little different than the one that was uploaded to the website. Sandy just did that recently. You'll just see some highlighted things within phase two that have changed. One is the recreation center will return to normal operating weekday and weekend hours. And they will still have the, basically, the limits on people within spaces, capacity limits for this phase two, and then that would turn over in phase three after the Fourth of July, after our next meeting. But those hours would return to, to normal hours. And then, the other change, the big change per the, the health order is, is as everyone knows, the county health order has changed from requirements to meeting WEDC guidelines, and that could have been a finable offense by the public health department, to everything as guidelines now. We still want to keep everything really in place from the WEDC guidelines. The only thing that was proving to be difficult was the cleaning schedule, bringing cleaning staff in three times a day. Right now, our, our traffic in some of our areas is pretty low, and you'd be bringing people in and possibly not even have anyone using those bathrooms. So, the suggestion would be to go back to normal cleaning schedules, which would be one time a day. I do think it is important that we post that at our bathrooms, so people know that the bathrooms are being cleaned daily and in the morning. And those are the big changes from what phase two was explained as earlier. So, and just to outline, I guess, library, and Peg already mentioned it in her report, sorry, that's phase three, but extending their service hours is the big thing for phase two for the library. And I've already touched on, really, the recreation center and park shelters, so. Does anyone have any questions?
Somebody trying to talk there, I don't know, okay. All right, so, we're looking at the, the phase two, and just getting council to approve that, so we can put that into place.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mayo, second by, I'm sorry, Chestnut, that we approve the city's phase two to reopen facilities as presented. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carried. All right, next, this was an addendum that was put in your packet, but I'll turn it over to President, Council President Paul Mayo.
Thank you, Mayor. The mayor appoints the following person to the library board, Rebecca Thiem Baseman. After hearing the mayor's appointment, I read a motion and a second for approval.
Motion approved.
Second.
I believe, motion made by Keeland, second by Martin, okay. Motion by Keeland, second by Martin, to approve the mayor's appointment of Rebecca Thiem Baseman to the library board. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries.
All right, thanks, Paul. Let's, let's go to new business, then, or buying a new lawnmower. Justin? No? Oh, Andrew, I forgot.
Justin, go for it.
I, I'm sorry, Andrew.
Is it because I'm sitting in a spot? Is that, is that the reason? All right, so I promise, thank you, Mayor, first off, and I promise this one will be a little bit shorter than the last thing I brought to this council meeting. So, we have a mower up in the Lakeside Memorial Cemetery that was originally purchased in 2006. We did replace the engine once in 2015, and overall, that mower has over 1,500 total hours on it. It's becoming a maintenance issue, we're having steering issues, which you can imagine becomes quite dicey up on the hills on the cemetery. Heaven forbid, they would have a steering mechanism break while they're on the side of that hill. So we are pumping money into it each year, it is becoming a safety hazard, so we decided to start looking at new ones and looking at different brands and options out there. It is unique because of those hills I talked about, and obviously, the tight spaces that we need to get in and around up there. So we need to look at what's considered a hydrostatic mower with a steering wheel, and yes, I had to ask what that means from Casey, our cemetery section. Essentially, what that means is it's a zero-turn with a steering wheel, so that they're able to get in and out of those places safely. We looked at several different brands and ended up liking the Cub Cadet, and the reason for that was, you know, we know what our, our mowers now are capable of, but we are able to have a company bring one out to us, and that's the one that we're looking at purchasing, and Casey was actually able to test it on the hills. He knows that it works, he trusts that it works, and he knows that it'll be safe for him. And so, we wanted to look at that brand, due to the quality of the motor that we trust, and a little bit lower price range for that mower. So we decided that that one fit our needs. We went out and got three quotes for that specific model, and you can see it's the Pro Z148SEFI. The lowest bid for that particular mower came from Wires Equipment at $8,350. I would like to note that one of the other quotes that are connected to this memo does offer an older model for a cheaper price. We did do some research as far as how that is different, and their engine is different on that. It's not fuel-injected. You know, we've read a lot of reviews as far as issues with the engine and being harder to fix. So we're kind of shying away from that and going with the model that we know and trust from trying it. So, money to purchase this mower would come from the cemetery trust fund. That's in place, and Kathy could answer questions if there are on that, for the perpetual care of the cemetery, so it's not coming out of our operational budget. So our recommendation would be to purchase that. So, just requesting tonight that the common council recommend approval of the purchase of the Cub Cadet Pro Z148SEFI from Wires Equipment for the price of $8,350 from the cemetery trust fund.
Okay. Any questions?
Motion?
Second.
Motion by Peterson, second by Olson, that the council approves of the Park and Recreation Department purchasing a Cub Cadet Pro from Wires Equipment Incorporated for the price of $8,350, with monies used from the cemetery trust fund. Discussion? Sandy, we call the roll.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Laurie Chestnut?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Scott Pachatsky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
And Eric Olson?
Aye.
10 ayes, motion carried.
Andrew, thank you. I won't make that mistake again. Well, maybe I will. Okay, we got Aeration Project 2019, 2020.
Thank you, Mayor. Memo that I have prepared for you is shown on page 107, continues on to 108, and a bunch of additional information after that. So our aeration basin is pretty much the heart of the wastewater treatment plant, it's kind of the center point, the most important part for the treatment itself at the plant. So in 15, in the six... So, in '15 into '16, we replaced a blower. A blower is just a big pump that pushes air. It activates the biological bacteria that are in there and provides the treatment that we're looking for to stay within our permit. We had, we have and had currently 150 horsepower blowers, which are pretty significant in size, they use a lot of energy. The '15 and '16, we downsized one that basically went kaput on us and made it a 50 horsepower, so we saved a lot of energy. And we had a lot of success with that, so we're looking to duplicate that again. And then on top of that, all the piping and diffusers which are within the tanks, we're looking to replace those at the same time. So, just a history of this, in '18, we did an energy study which basically focused everything on that aeration blowers and the inefficiencies with the piping and the diffusers in those tanks, showing that how important this project would be. In '19, we did another preliminary study of showing, kind of defining what kind of equipment would be needed, identifying various components and equipment appropriate for the project and our plant, identifying design parameters, and then looking forward to DNR permitting and additional reporting as needed. And then finally, just recently this last summer, we did the final design work, which included the CAD drawings and all the engineering calculations, and then on top of that, the DNR approvals. So, moving forward, mentioned that the previous project from '15, '16, we learned a lot from that project and how we handled that one was we hired a consultant engineer, Kemper, and they basically started from beginning to end with the design permitting, getting a, a bid, and then bringing it into construction and inspection. Here, since we've learned so much and we have a solid crew down there, we're taking on a lot of that work ourselves. We're doing a lot of the installation, we're reaching out to the contractors, we know what needs to be done. And what you'll see on the spreadsheet on 109 is basically a breakdown of the budget and the costs that have been prepared thus far. So, the budget's on the far left column, if you can scroll down, Aaron please. We budgeted $180,000. In the middle is the actual, what we've spent so far, and then the request tonight, which includes the, all the various parts from the equipment, enclosures, VFDs, electrical inspection, the blower itself, all packaged up, plus contingency. So, I'm looking for an approval of $120,000 to come out of the sewer utility 2020 bonds to complete this project. That 120, like I said, would go to all these various items that are listed here just to complete that project. So, yeah, I mean, I won't keep blabbering on the, the plans are, so pictures and some plans are included afterwards, and if you have any other questions, feel free to ask.
You're not going to go through the plans with this?
Starting on page 1.
Anybody like to make a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
Motion by Chestnut, second by Fair, that the council approves of the 120 grand to complete the aeration and blower upgrade and use the 2009, or 2020 sewer utility bonds to pay for that. Any discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mail?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
10 ayes, motion carried.
All right, Justin, you're still up.
Okay, next one, 130, my memo regarding the Compliance Maintenance and Annual Report. This is our C Mar for 2019, again at the treatment plant. This is basically our DNR report card that we do annually. So, it's a self-evaluation tool and that promotes the owner's awareness and responsibility for wastewater collection and treatment needs, measures the performance of the wastewater facility and assesses its level of compliance with permit, with permit requirements. So, beyond, or the next page is a Resolution 1459. That's what I'm looking to get approved from council tonight. Now, this is a recognition from you to the DNR that we reviewed the report and we took action, or in this case, no action because the report card was a 4.0, again for the sewer treatment group down there again. So, the report is on the next several pages. We don't have to go through this in detail, but I guess probably the last page is, is probably the most important one. It just shows that every aspect that the DNR is looking for us to report on, to complete, to comply with our permit, we've got a 4.0 grade for, again, for 2019 at the treatment plant. So, again, looking for approval of that resolution.
Slow move.
Second.
Motion by Hackett, second by Chestnut, that we approve of Resolution Number 1459. This is a Compliance Maintenance Annual Report, C Mar 2019. Discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mail?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
And Eric Olson?
Aye.
10 ayes, motion carried.
All right, keep going.
Okay, 159 is the next memo. This is in regard to a groundwater study in the Foxfire subdivision area that I'm feeling that, or believing that the city should conduct. So, over the past number of years, I've fielded a number of complaints out in that subdivision in regards to sump pump usage and groundwater levels, to the tune where sump pumps have been running 24/7 for the entire year. Now, it is common, you know, depending on where you live, how you built your house, if you have a sump pump that it would run in the springtime, sometimes in the fall. Out here, it's running, we have multiple homes where the sump pumps are running nonstop. It's creating some hazards, some issues. We have water on the sidewalk constantly and on the road in the wintertime, that's obviously a huge safety issue, big negative. And of course, those homeowners are being burdened with a high electric bill. But, right now, the subdivision has houses on 19 of the 40 lots, so it's about half-filled. We have a couple new builds that have happened recently. All the houses are, are within 25 years old, and even the houses that have been built, the most recent, are having this issue as well. So, as you go out there, and I've been reviewing the plans, it, it's, everything seems appropriate as far as the, the building heights, the foundations, but we're still having issues. The newest builds, we've been telling the builders and the homeowners, you got to get your foundations up, you got to get your foundations up. And it's still providing that there is an issue out there. We've had some wet, rainy, and snowy seasons the last couple of years. There are some localized ponds, some are natural, some are man-made. Talked with the DNR, studied some of the weather, weather patterns, and again, have talked with all the residents, I shouldn't say all, most of the residents out there. And this is just an issue that has come to fruition or come to a head and we just need some answers. So, what I would like to do, what I'm requesting, is to do a groundwater study out there to determine basically what is going on with the groundwater, if these local ponds are influencing the groundwater height against the foundation walls, or whether it's strictly just a natural weather phenomenon. We need this information. I feel it's important to fill the rest of the subdivision. If we cannot build houses out there, obviously that affects our tax base, it affects the property values that are out there. So, I feel that this type of study here is warranted for those being the main reasons as the benefit to the city. So, reached out to Strand and Associates to get a proposal on what this would take. Now, only chose Strand on this for several reasons. They have our stormwater system from our GIS data, so they're familiar with all that information in that data. They have completed stormwater reviews for, well, the developments in the past four years, which include Bonneville, Boomers, and the Swiderski development, which is out in that area. So, they're, they're familiar with our system, the geological formations, and what is out there existing as far as pervious, impervious surfaces, and feel that they have a step up on completing this work with us. And again, just working with them, they have an understanding of what we're looking for and how we can work together to get this done efficiently. So, there is an attached aerial showing the area. Of course, I think we all know what we're talking about, and the proposal is attached as well. So, the action is approving this proposal from Strand to complete this groundwater study with us, which the funding would come from TIF 6.
Okay. Any questions, discussion? Go ahead Scott.
Justin, now, the study comes back, is it, it's a possibility then that there's some more money the city might have to be spending to mitigate these problems, or?
That, that's a possibility. So, they, they may find, you know, they'll compile this data and they might find, hey, we need to make more improvements to our storm sewer. You know, we may have to make some adjustments. There might be something with the property owners in that area may have to do for improvements. Right now, those types of answers are kind of up in the air because, because of the nature of the beast. I mean, there's, there's some natural weather phenomenons which are hard to track, and like I said, there are some artificial ponds nearby which could be influencing the, what's going on underground. There's irrigation going on out there, so there's a lot of moving parts, and we, we don't have those answers until, we'll be, we'll be able to define those answers after the study. All right, thanks.
Yep. Anybody else? Anybody want to make a motion?
Slow move.
Second. Motion by Chestnut, second by Peterson, that council approves a wording Strand and Associates with an amount not to exceed 24,500 for a groundwater study in the Foxfire subdivision area with funding to come from our TIF 6. Discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mail?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
And Eric Olson?
Aye.
10 ayes, motion carried.
All right, Franklin Street.
Okay. 163 is the next memo regarding Franklin Street and an alley discontinuation in between Granite and Pleasant. Now, this came up as we started developing the Granite Street plans, identifying there's a right-of-way, an old right-of-way, and if I can direct your attention to 167, of Franklin Street, of course, between Granite and Pleasant Street, in an alleyway there, I got, have that highlighted in purple. So, these areas, we feel don't serve the, the traveling public any longer. There's a granite shelf there, obviously that's why we call it Granite Street. To put a road through there, plus some utilities, would be very costly. It's not, would not really serve that community or that area very well because you can see we have roads that go around the block, we have sewer and water that go around the block. Other utilities are also there serving all of those residents that are there. The alleyway, which is, I guess, in the center, again, there doesn't seem to be a real use of the traveling public for this alleyway any longer. It just seems to be more like people's backyards and side yards. So, we just did one of these very similar to Union Street. We're looking to discontinue those two areas, and when this process has ended up, which will end up in, in early August, if we keep moving forward with it, the properties will just absorb into the middle of those right-of-way areas. The process kicked off tonight by a resolution by the common council to consider discontinuation of these two right-aways. It's shown within your packet on 164 and 165. And then a timeline is shown on page 166, just showing how this all happens one more time. So, we have the public hearing that's going to eventually happen on August 4th. It's going to go to Plan Commission, which I should note is most likely going to be moved from that July 1st date.
Ah, yes, I was going to say that in my monthly report. Yeah, Plan Commission will likely be canceled. We're looking at canceling it. We will have a special Plan Commission meeting on either July 13th or 15th, your zoning code updates.
Yep. Thanks Aaron. And then, finally, the, all the surveys and the legal descriptions are included within the packet, and, well, we won't go through those one by one, just looking for approval of Resolution 1460 to start off this discontinuation of Franklin and the alleyway.
Move to approve.
Okay.
Motion by Olson, second by Hackett?
Yes.
That council approves of Resolution Number 1460, the resolution to consider the discontinuation of Franklin Street right-of-way, right-of-way, and alleyway right-of-way from Granite Street to Pleasant Street located in the city of Opaqua County, Wisconsin, and set a public hearing date for August 4th, 2020. Discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mail?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
And Eric Olson?
Aye.
10 ayes, motion carried.
Yes, sir.
Next one, 172. This is a sanitary sewer easement in regards to the SCS Swiderski Development on the west side of town, Timber Ridge Lot Area. So, the memo on 172, probably just skip right to 173, which just shows you a, the general overview of the plan, highlighting the area where we need a sewer easement. Now, that in between those two larger apartment buildings, we have a manhole. Since they are accepting two laterals, or more than one lateral from a residence, we need to define that as a public manhole. So, that manhole plus the line that's coming out to our right-of-way will be public. So, we need an easement through there so that we can maintain that in the future. Shoot, my computer kind of bounced around here. So, following that giant plan sheet is just an, an easement agreement, excuse me, with Swiderski. They have reviewed it, we have reviewed it as well, we're in agreement with it. So, we just need council action tonight so that we can move ahead with signatures and get this recorded against the property.
Motion?
Make a motion, we approve.
Okay, we got a motion by Hack, or, Pritchatsky, you're going to second it, Steve?
Sure.
All right, thank you. The council approves of the sanitary sewer utility easement agreement between SCS Timber Ridge Apartments LLC and the city of Opaqua. Discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mail?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
And Eric Olson?
Aye.
10 ayes, motion carried.
Okay, I think this is my last one. Oh, oh, I didn't know that. 179 is the next memo, US Cellular Lease Agreement on Shamble, on our Shamble Water Tower, on Shambroon. US Cellular has a bunch of antennas they have used for their coverage in the area. We have an agreement with them where they pay us monthly for that space that they use. They have recently approached us, or I should say, well, over the wintertime, they wanted to upgrade those facilities and include more antennas. So, we, they, we received plans from them that, which, which was reviewed. So we, they, we received plans from them, that, which, which was reviewed and approved. And now we're at the point where, since they are increasing their usage space on top of our tower, we have agreed to increase the rent. So currently, the monthly payment is 1,800 a month. With the addition of the additional antennas up there, which Aaron has shown nicely, we are recommending increasing that rent an additional $725 per month on top of that 1,800. We have opinion that this is a good price for the city. Showing on page 180, 180, yes, excuse me, is the third amendment to this agreement. So upon approval tonight, this amendment would receive signatures and then be adopted with the agreement, and thus increasing our rent for our water tower space.
Justin, have they put the antennas up there yet?
Not the new ones. There's existing antennas up there. This plan would replace a bunch of their old ones and then add some new ones.
And so are there other cellphone services on that tower right now, besides US Cellular?
There, we have some Wapaka Online stuff up there. Talking with Josh, he is fine with moving his stuff around and making room for them. We had one other, and I don't recall what it is. There's, there's like two other miscellaneous antennas up there.
But not any cellphone carriers?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. All right. Any, any other questions?
I got a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Eric.
Have they heard your number and are they in agreement with it?
Yes.
Oh, well then, awesome.
There wasn't, there was a negotiation period.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Olson.
Second.
Second by Fair, that the council approves of the third amendment to the water and tower ground space lease with US Cellular as detailed, which is increasing the rent, what, from 725 per month to 1,800 per month? Any discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Alan left the, he left the meeting.
He wrote a message on the chat.
Okay, Alan's gone.
Okay. Scott Pachatski.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
And Eric Olson.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right. Thank you, Justin. Next up, we have license report number 1503. This is the operator's license. Again, as I say every month, the operator's license or bartender's license. And we have in yellow that they're pending background checks and payment of any fines that are owed to the city. We'd be looking for a motion to approve.
So move.
Motion by Chestnut. Second by Peterson, that we approve license report 1503, the operator's license. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. License report 1504, scrap dealers license. Got one on there. We need a motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Chestnut, second by Fair, that council approves license report number 1504, scrap dealers license. Discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Next up, we have... Let me write a note before I forget here. Okay, next up, we have Jay, IT Community Media Director Pay Adjustment. And Aaron, you're gonna lead this?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Smith. So as you guys can see in your packet on page 188, there is a memo for the IT Community Media Director Pay Adjustment. As everyone knows, in the past few months, we have probably, every organization within the country has highlighted the importance of technology. Actually, with us, Community Media has been leaned on heavily as well. So this is kind of shining a spotlight on something that we've always known existed. But to start with a little background, in 2011, Josh Warner was hired as our city IT director. Over the past nine years, the position has picked up responsibilities, including developing and managing 96.3, WILW, marketing and communication, administration duties for Wapaka Online. Actually, one of the employees, Ralph, had about seven more hours a week than he does right now at that time. Increased IT duties within the police department and wastewater departments. And also, the amount of devices we have now compared to nine years ago is pretty substantial. Just one example of that is all of the key fobs and all of our entry systems within all of our facilities. More iPads, all of that stuff. So the 2000, in 2017, there was a pay scale adjustment. And at that time, during the adjustment, actually, this position was set just below the range. That range at the time was 27,040 per hour to 35,150. And you can see the pay range there, 56,073. With the pay increases over the past three years, that range has moved up from 59,000 to 77,000. And right now, he still falls underneath that range. So this, basically, the summary of this is we want to get Josh up into that range, and we feel like he is more than deserving of being in the middle of that range. I kind of talked about his, his past three months. And like I said, it's shined a spotlight on his performance. But I think everyone within the department, within the organization has recognized for a long time the value that Josh provides to us. Not only the volume of work, but the efficiency and quality. I am often amazed at how much he gets done in a short amount of time. I think one example of that is, I mean, we moved all of our people to remote office workspace in, in three days. And, and they were able to, to do that efficiently and effectively, and we were able to serve the public. I still talk to city administrators who, they're not running committee meetings because of the technology challenges that it presents. And we missed very, very few. We didn't miss a council meeting at all. And many people missed council meetings. Continue our business because of, of the skills that Josh has and the things he was able to implement. So those are just a couple of things during this time. One thing, he has been a huge asset to me as we've went through this time, is just weekly, something as simple as weekly interviews with, that we're doing on Wednesdays, just communicating to the public. He's become not only our IT and community media, but almost like a communication director at the same time. It helps, he runs our Facebook pages, so on and so forth. So that's been a huge help. I think it's noteworthy that there's, you know, he runs a radio station, he's our IT director, he runs the community media, he also runs the administrative part of Wapaka Online. And we are the only, to my knowledge, we are the only internet service that is run by a municipality in the state of Wisconsin. There used to be another one in Reedsburg, but that has since folded up. And it's a huge asset. We talk about people not wanting to be in rural communities because of the lack of internet access. And Wapaka Online provides an option for those people. So I think that's an awesome utility, and Josh is in charge of running that. Josh routinely works in, in the office on weekends and off-hour times. He kind of has that mentality of, I'm gonna do whatever it takes to, to meet the needs of, of our organization. So that's something that can't necessarily be taught. I, I do have a pay range there, just of some comparables. It's always kind of challenging when you go through some of this stuff because you don't, positions are a little different, they have different scopes of work. But I think there's some really good comparables on there. And I think what you'll see is that our range is right in there. And I think that $68,000 mark, which is what we're proposing to get him to, really fits right in with everything else you see there. There are some bigger communities on there. And you could say, yep, Wisconsin Rapids and Point have higher populations. Well, they also have higher pay ranges on there, too. So I think it fits in pretty accurately. As for how, how we would fund this, I've talked to Kathy, and the general fund, sewer fund, water fund, and Wapaka Online would all pitch in about one-fourth. This is something we've talked to Justin about. And as noted before in this memo, there has been some additional duties, specifically in the wastewater treatment plant, as our past wastewater director or superintendent actually was pretty hands-on, really hands-on with the IT stuff. And Josh has taken some of that. You know, I've mentioned it at the onset of this whole thing, but I think this COVID-19 pandemic has made us all realize kind of the importance of technology and where everyone is going. And I think we asked the question during the last few months is, how much do we prioritize it and how much do we want to invest in technology? And I think it's only gonna get more used by our organization. So my recommendation is to approve a pay adjustment for the IT and community director, media director, to $68,000 annually. That would go into and affect immediately upon approval. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Motion by Hackett, second by Mayo, that we approve a pay adjustment for IT Community Media Director Josh Warner to $68,000 annually, effective immediately. Any discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Scott Pachatski.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
And Eric Olson.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Thank you.
Aaron, thank you. Next up, we have issues, project discussion. And we have, Kathy's gonna give us our annual TIF report.
Correct.
What was that? Did I hear that right? Your mic is on.
Oh, my gosh.
What does that make you feel, Kathy?
Yeah, Kathy, we want to hear it.
Well, since I don't have to tell everybody what a TIF is and start from the beginning, I'm just going to give tonight just an update. I didn't put anything in the packet because they're all numbers, but I will have Josh and Sandy post it on the website after the meeting. Aaron does have it up. Just to highlight again, the TIFs are doing good. I, I don't see any issues with having them be in a negative fund balance. They're all being funded with the increment that is generated each year. This past year, the increment was $1,890,000. And the current outstanding debt for the TIFs is only $3.5 million. So it has definitely been helping to have lower interest rates and us to be able to take advantage of it in refinancing the debt for these TIF districts. If we do the 2010 refinancing this year, we'll save another $584,000 worth of interest from TIF 8. And just to highlight on each of the TIFs, TIF 3, we are still looking at closing it in 2022. You want to go just to the next page, Aaron? This is TIF 3. The blue column is the last year that we could do any expenditures out of it, which was 2018. In 2020, which is the yellow column, we're still looking at breaking even with money coming from TIF 6 to pay the debt service. And we're projecting that this TIF would close in 2022 with one last increment in 2023, payoff all its debt, return $839,000 back to the debt service fund from the taxpayers when the increment wasn't available to pay the debt service and to pay back the $75,000 advance from the water and sewer utility. Again, this would have just a small residual amount in 2023 when it would close. But since we can't do any more projects in this TIF, the sooner that we can close it, the better. Next page would be TIF 6. This is, I'm sorry, that's TIF 4. TIF 6 is, I just want to go over, is that it would continue to be funding TIF 3. We are looking at a projected closing of 2021. Depending on the projects that we have, we can clo, we can continue to do projects till 2022 in TIF 6. I wouldn't want to keep this TIF open any longer than necessary because by closing this TIF, we would be under the 12% equalized value within TIFs and be able to not be, not have any issues with amending any TIF boundaries or adding new TIFs. So we're still looking at closing 22 or 21 with TIF 6. TIF 9, which is over on Industrial Drive, is a negative increment TIF. And we're gonna be closing that at the end of this year. Recommending council close this TID in 2020 and just transfer the remaining balance to TIF 10 to pay any outstanding debt that TIF 10 has. So we'll have another TIF closed in this year. TIF 10, which is School Street and the Rec Center and the old St. Mary's Church. We're still on par to amend that TIF project plan to allow a half-mile radius to provide for economic stimulus. We're going to be going to the Joint Review Board at the end of this month to restart that process. And then we are looking at prepaying the last payment of the 2021, 2010 outstanding debt service, which is 95,000 using TIF 9 funds to, to have no outstanding debt for TIF 10. And then hopefully, any remaining funds would be used for the redevelopment of the St. Mary's Church property. And 2023 is the last year that you can, we can incur costs in TIF 10. TIF 8 is our challenging TIF. We haven't seen the impact of the premier housing project in it. But with the savings from the debt, refinancing the debt, we could do several things. And I have a couple of different options in this packet for everybody to look at is, one, we could keep the TIDs open until the end, which is 2031, '32. And that would allow us to pay back the sewer and water utilities, the full amount of the advances that were made to the, to this TID. However, there's another option would be as to not fund all of that debt, of that advance, except what is required by the Public Service Commission for the water utility and use a million dollars towards economic stimulus in TIF 10 or TIF 4. So there's a couple of different options out there. But those are just some projections. And I'd be more than happy to sit down with anybody and, and go over. with anybody and, and go over, um, the numbers. Um, TIF four, um, we're amending the project plan for the half-mile radius like TIF ten and to allow the transfers from four to ten. Uh, we're, uh, continuing the transfers for the TIF eight bonds, and, um, pretty much is the, um, last TID that we would, positive TID that we would have, um, to, to go out, um, either make the decision to close it as early as two thousand and twenty-five, when all of TIF eight's bonds would be, um, paid off, and some, and the required amount for the water utility advance, or to keep it open and pay back the sewer and the wa, and the balance of the water utility. So there's some options, um, but it is a, uh, a very large, uh, equalized value, uh, amount that's in TIF four. So, um, I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to have to hold it open ten years, um, when it could probably make a bigger difference, uh, in the tax rate for, um, the residents. So, that's some of the things that, um, I'd be more than happy to sit down and talk to everybody, but, um, just, um, the most important thing is, is the TIFs are in a good position, uh, right now. So, the sooner we can close them, the better. That's it.
Do you have any questions of Kathy? No, Kathy, um, I keep forgetting which board. What's the next meeting that you have to have?
The Joint Review Board, it'll, we have to, um, meet before the end of the month. And we have, um, requests out to the members to see if they're available either June twenty-ninth or thirtieth to, um, to meet. And they'll get the same information as the council's getting tonight.
Good. Anybody have any questions? All right, thank you Kathy, nice job. All right, uh, next up, uh, we have, uh, marketing Wapaka, Erin?
All right, guys, we've been here for a long time. Steve, I want to let you know that I am still smiling under this mask after that comment.
Thank you.
Um, so this is something we've been talking about over the last few, few months, actually, since the winter, in a couple of different capacities. Number one, we have been talking about it with our Wapaka Growth Group, and how do we kind of tell our story? Uh, number two, ever since we got the branding principles, um, kind of online and adopted, which you guys saw this fall, uh, we've been talking about, okay, we have these principles, but now how do we use them? Um, if you remember back to my two thousand and twenty work plan, actually, there's two things on that work plan uh, that we wanted to get accomplished, and one that relates to this is tell our compelling story, and this will absolutely do that. And the other is, uh, utilize our new brand principles, which I just touched on. So what we did is we have been working kind of on two separate things. So if you look at this, it's kind of two silos. One is, uh, a, a marketing strategy, and how do we do that in an affordable and effective way? And right now, we're thinking that is through social media, target marketing, things like that, to put on, uh, you know, to put on Channel Two or to put on these regional TV. It's just the budgets are astronomical to do something like that, and you're, you may not even be as effective as you are in this target marketing, um, through the data that, uh, these companies collect. So for example, you guys probably have all been on Facebook or something like that, and maybe the day before you went shopping, um, for shoes, and all of a sudden, a pair of those shoes pop up, because it knows you're looking at them. Well, that's data that our Wapaka County Economic Development Corporation is purchasing for all of our communities. We will have access to that data, and we will use that data to figure out who are the people that really value the things that we have and we're good at here in Wapaka. Um, it places kind of numbers on people. So Scott, you, you, you may be a forty-two, and that may mean you love silent sports and outdoors, and it'll know that, and we can target market you. Um, so that's the second half of this thing. But in order to put something in front of those numbers of people that we identify, we have to create video content, and this is the first half of it. Um, so we've been working with Noel Lenke, and when I say we, I mean myself and Ron at the school district, and he has put together this Wapaka video marketing proposal. Um, and this is, it's tough to see, because it's pretty small, but I want to zoom in here and give you kind of an idea of what we're looking at. We're looking at creating, uh, forty-five to fifty videos that tell our story, and he's segmented kind of in categories what that may look like. So you'll see, there'd be a main video, sixty to ninety seconds, you'd have these kind of headings, and then you'd have these dropdowns, and you can use these to target market the specific people. So you can see events, what does a day on the lakes look like, what does a day on Main Street look like? Um, the adventure seeker, kind of that silent sports thing that I was just talking about. And then you'll notice, like, Wapaka stories. So this could be anything from a business who just recently came into town. We have a business that's having a grand opening on Main Street, or, uh, in the downtown area, coming up in July, and they could tell their story, and why did they decide to move from Wisconsin Rapids to Wapaka Downtown? And what do they love about it, and then what is that, that experience like? Um, it could be a, a couple that lived in Nashville, and they moved to Wapaka, and why do they like the small-town feel of Wapaka better possibly than the big-style life of Nashville? So, uh, these are kind of things that have yet to be determined, but that's what some of these stories could look like. And then, as far as payment goes, um, and this is just kind of a, it's just more in detail on some of these things. So, as far as payment goes, this is something that we'll plan to pay up for through the Community and Economic Development Budget. So I'm not here a, a, asking for action or anything like that. I just wanted to keep you guys updated on kind of what's happening as far as the branding principles, and are we using them? And the, the answer is yes, we're moving towards using them. Again, this is, so for forty-five to fifty videos, we're looking at twelve thousand five hundred dollars, but that would be cut in half. So this is a one-time expense, um, because, and the reason it's cut in half is because we're sharing it with the school district. I can tell you that right now, after this, I'll come forward with something with like a marketing strategy standpoint, and that's more of a reoccurring cost. And right now, what we're being told is to be effective in that marketing range, we are looking at eight hundred dollars a month. And again, right now, with those two partners, that would be split, so four hundred dollars a month. Now, that could change from between now and October, but in order to get to that, we need to start the video production portion of this and, uh, have material that we can eventually plug into that strategy. So that's kind of just an overview of, of kind of where we're going. Um, and I, like I said, I, it's all money that, uh, that we, we feel like we can handle in our budget. And, um, I guess with that, do you guys have any questions? All right.
Thank you, Erin.
I, uh... I just have one comment. Um, at the very end, the last page?
Yes.
I believe our branding group and Civic Brand, it's really Maine to chain. It's not chain to Maine. It's, that was the slogan.
Is it, is it the other way?
I'm pretty sure. Sophie, you want to double check?
I'll definitely double check.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Erin.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, communications, recommendations of the mayor. I, I, just a couple of things I want to talk about. Uh, one, uh, it seems like our second meeting, uh, of the month seems to be longer than our first meeting. Uh, maybe if we adjust something, maybe the department head reports, we could move to the first meeting, and maybe that would even it out. Let's, let's try that and, and see if that helps us out. Um, we'll probably end up with the first one being longer than the second one then, but, but, and it could just be because there are so many things that are happening in these last few meetings, but it does seem like we're fighting for things to do in the first meeting, but the second meeting, we, uh, have, uh, a lot more that's going on. Uh, also, and it doesn't just have to do with this ordinance tonight, but feel free to contact, if you have a concern about something that you see in your council packet, and that's why we get it out to you as soon as you can. If you have a concern, or if you have a question, uh, on how the, how this got on the agenda, what's in the agenda, whatever the case might be, it would be really helpful for me, uh, the Erin, the city administrator, and the department heads, if you would let us know, so that we'd have the opportunity to do some research on some of these things. And obviously, uh, most of you, or some of you, uh, had a, an issue with that ordinance, and, and we didn't know about it till we got here tonight. I mean, we thought we were going in the direction that you wanted. So just, just help us out a little bit by just sending us an email, giving us a call, or texting us, whatever you want to do, um, so that we can be, uh, be prepared when we get here. Anything else for the good of the meeting? It is my, uh, forty-first wedding anniversary tonight. I think my wife, oh, she's probably happy that it's a long meeting, I don't know. We'll see.
Forty-one, wow. Pretty good news.
Anything else? Okay, we, uh, Alan's gone, so, and Paul, are you yelling?
Good, move to adjourn.
Motion by Hagan?
Second.
Second by Olson, that we adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried, we're adjourned at, uh, eight forty-four PM. Have a great night, drive safe.